And admit, and admit.
You go first.
You don't have to read it now, he's here.
He's printed out.
Yeah. I'd let him do it.
Huh? Yeah.
Like at church, yeah.
Well, test some of them.
Speaking of church.
Hey. Have you had any more of those?
Again. My hands. My hands were colder. It's colder than usual.
Uh, Jane, when you call the meeting to order, will that Zoom account name has been known and their name is?
He's the one that's also talking. Yes.
Are you ready?
Yeah, we're going.
Oh, okay.
That's what we're trying to.
Okay. I am bringing this regular town council meeting to order on Thursday, March thirteenth. Um, before we get started, we do have somebody on Zoom that just has testing up as their name to participate in our meetings or or stay in our meeting. We need your full name, please.
They're unsure how to do that. They want to just put their name in the chat.
There's stuff in.
Hello there.
So on Zoom. Whoever's named testing currently, we do need a real name other than a testing of Zoom name. If we don't, we're going to have to remove you from this meeting. The manager's offered to assist you if you want to put your name in the chat. He can help put a name up there for you. So we'll go ahead with roll call, and if nothing happens, Mr. Manager, you have the opportunity to use your mouse and and take that name down. Thank you. Roll call.
Roll call, yes. Councilor Bragden.
Present.
Can't you hear me, Cora?
Here.
Here. Here.
Here.
Here.
Here. All present. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, unknocked, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we have one adjustment to the agenda. There's an update to order number thirty seven dash twenty twenty five that's in your packet. There are no minutes to approve this meeting, and we have no special presentations this meeting. So we are now going into a workshop. That means there is no public discussion. It's just a workshop with the counselors. And I'm going to ask you, Mr. Manager, to talk about our options going forward, knowing that we have some discussions on the charter in the future to have.
Excellent. Thank you. So in recent meetings, requests have been questions asked of how to proceed, when to proceed with slew of charter amendment proposal orders that have been table since. So I've drafted up two options for consideration on forward with that, identifying a start date of March twenty seventh, and then second option in in July. So I'll describe those and give my recommendation and seek some input input from the council on which direction they would be uh, more inclined to go with, and then we'll put things into motion accordingly. So option one would be to start this process on March twenty seventh at the regular council. So would seek a presentation from the Charter of Committee, basically a repeat of their presentation early last fall to review their proposed change. Six orders for those proposed changes. And those would be added to that same. Now that same meeting is, you know, because right now we're in the middle of our budget work stretch. So that would also be coupled with a budget workshop and any other that would happen at. Um, if that was passed on the twenty seventh, we would prepare for the following special hearings to be advertised. So there would be six newspaper advertisements. Charter dictates that those run for ten days in the local paper. Once weekly edition of our local paper that equal two weeks bringing our the special will be able twentieth. Regular council meetings. Would that look like? It would be six special hearings for those charter. It would be the six orders presented following the special hearing to move those amendments to the next referendum June. Uh, then there would be the second special hearing on the entirety of the municipal budget. Then there would be the official special hearing of entirety of the school's budget. And then there would be the entirety of the list of all budget adoption orders for municipal budget and the school budget, which you know there uh, very many. So and then depending on how those votes go, we would then use uh, the month of May to prepare for those to be included. Random vote in June that would prepare those ballots. They would be produced by hand. It would give us that month to a month and a half or so for community occasion on the proposed changes and engagement, uh, encouragement to participate in that vote, those charter change. For those that may not be as familiar with how this poll does. The town charter is our local law. That's our bylaws. It's our our governing document. So it's really when these, when it's not often that it so when we do good point. Highly encouraged that anybody registered to the town participates and gets their voice heard. So that brings us to the June referendum and school budget vote. At this point, there are no state referendums to be considered in action. Vote. The voter participation three year average is three hundred and three participants. We have forty two hundred thirty members that some registered voters. And it's about eight to ten thousand dollars to run one of those. So a couple of items about that voter participation. The numbers from twenty three and twenty four were substantially higher turnout, it's more than double, and those both included presidential primary and state referendums. The twenty two is more in line with what this budget or this vote would look like. It is. It would just be the school budget and it's refer a friend and questions included. Uh, and that year, it was a total of one hundred fifty voters who participated vote school budget again, nearly three thousand registered voters in the town. Two thousand some odd tax bills of that. So let's go over to option two. Uh, that starts this process in July and prepares it for the November election and referendum vote. So that timeline, we would start at uh, the second meeting in July twenty fourth. Um, that's when we would request the committee to set a view on changes, proposed changes, and then have the six orders on the agenda. Um, if that's passed, the newspaper ads would begin July thirty first with ten day requirement, leading us to mid August, August fourteenth. At that regularly scheduled council meeting. It'd just be the six special orders, uh, special hearings, and then the six orders to follow those for consideration to add them in the November election. And then of course, whatever that time sensitive council says is added at that. Um, that gives us the remainder of September and the entire month of October. Uh, prep work, community communication, encouragement participation. That leads us to a September fifth uh, cutoff for submission to have those included in our ballot prints that are then able to be processed through our voting with that uh, and included in local on the same you know, stuff as our council, uh, election state referendums that same. And that would be November fourth, uh, when that happened. Three year average for that election is one thousand five hundred seventy three. Um, the highest turnout of that, uh, obviously this last election, twenty four, uh, twenty three hundred local registered voters participating in that. The others were uh, you know, about sixteen, two hundred little under two thousand. That would and of course, that would be same as our council, uh, or state ref. And that would all happen at the same time. Definitely a higher so participation natural. So my professional recommendation to your administrator is that he go to we go to option two, uh, which allows us to focus solely on the proposed charter amendments. Or documented culmination of years of work by the person being you know, evolved over those years. We would have much fewer uh, major action items all happening at the same time. Uh, promises a naturally higher turnout. And it drastically streamlines the load on the clerk's office in preparation. They don't have to create those ballots by hand. They don't have to count those by hand. Quite a bit of work that comes to that or comes along with that. So what we are looking for is some feedback on the options. Uh, happy to answer any questions or Morgan.
Yes, Mr. Vaners, your counselor, Bragden, has a question, has his hand up.
Thank you. Not a question. I have several comments, and since we have quite a group here tonight, I want to give a little bit of history. Uh, the Charter Review Committee has been working on this for about four to five years, correct me if I'm wrong. Uh, more than that. So this has been in the works for a while. Uh, for those that are curious in the processes and decision making that we had uh, ninety percent of the videos that we recorded from when I was brought on are on YouTube for you to watch. As well as ninety five percent have the agendas and outline every decision that we made and how we made it. So if you're curious, those are online. Uh, videos are really fun to watch. They are a little bit lengthy. There were some meetings that went over almost two hours. So just for wanting. Uh, second, I am in favor of option two for multiple reasons. One, cost evidence. Uh, as Mr. Manager put it out, it's, you know, you could spend thousand dollars to have a June election. Uh, and I think it would be a better turnout if we did it in November. But on top of that, if the council sees that there needs to be a change or wants to send it back to committee, it gives us ample time, and we're not rushing to get these changes done and then resubmit it to legal for review, uh, to to make sure that we we are doing everything according to the board. So I am much in favor of option two for those two reasons. Uh, third and last, uh, I know we don't have public comment tonight, but there is a committee member here, and she worked tirelessly on this document as well. So I would like to ask if the council is okay. If she has a comment, I would like her to be able to be heard. And I'll leave it at that.
Thank you. I'll go to council first. Other council comments? Council of Dume.
Thank you. Since I'm the guy that just kind of says stuff. I'm gonna shorten that up. I'm I'm for option number two. Much for the same reasons that Council Bragden said, cost savings, workload on the staff. And to be honest, the school budget referendum that we vote on is literally two hundred employees that go vote, maybe a hundred of their family members and fifty other people from the from the community. So I think it's going to be a lot more accurate voter turnout with more representation in November. So I think it's a wiser option.
So we have two for option two. Another other council, go ahead. Council of Pelletier, you want as well?
When this was brought up last fall, my objection to not having it then was the voter turnout and apparently same issue today. So I'll go for option two as well.
Council Higgins.
I too in support of option two, just because of participation from the town.
Counselor Macken, William.
I think very good.
That's what I'm going.
Yeah. I'm in favor of option two for all the reasons they stated, and also with all the work that we have to do on the budget and how long those meetings are, I'm really not interested in dragging them out four, five, six hours.
Appreciate that. Miss Sullivan, would you like to speak? Would you like as a member of that committee?
Yes.
Hi, Sandy Sullivan, one oh four Sunset Drive. And I, as usual, am going to oppose. Um, I think it should be option one. When it was discussed last fall, it was put off for the election in June. June is coming. Um, so in August or September, are we then going to find that there's too much work to do um, with other things on the agenda? And so instead of it being done in November, it's going to be put off to the following June. Um, I I don't like the idea of putting off, putting off, putting off. I also am older than all of you and less tolerant than all of you. If the people in Millen Market are interested in voting, they will get out and vote. You may find that the November voting, you have more turnout. Or you you will get a more people voting on this issue. But it's not because they're there because of this issue. It's there because they want to vote on the senator. And oh, yeah. Well, there is a question about the charter committee, so we'll check this box. Uh, I just don't like putting on. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Appreciate your concern. Would you like?
Yeah. Bragden. Um, I I don't disagree with Miss Sullivan whatsoever, and that was the same impression that I was under is we were going to wait till June. And I was praying that the state was going to have something going on in June for us. But that is obviously not the case yet. Uh, context for those that are also unaware, in when I was reelected in November, that was one of the first things we talked about was was having this come up and before that as well. And the reason why we decided to hold for as long as we did uh, is due to how long it took it legal. And when it finally came back, it left us with very little time to actually do printing, which actually wouldn't have worked out in the first place. Uh, it would have created a massive amount of workload in the clerk's office. And then on top of that, there were several other concerns as well. Those are the really big ones that I remember. Um, and with all of the options that we had laid out before us, the agreement was, yes, let's push it back till June. Uh, and my opinion has changed, but I don't anticipate us having to wait for legal to review it. I think the last presentation that we did to the council, the council was in favor of basically the entire thing. This is a new council, obviously, so opinions have probably changed. That being said, I think with what we have now, and we don't have to review an entire document, there's less work that will need to be done if we have to. Plus, there's other things that we can do to to get where we need to be a lot faster. So I don't think we'll have that crunch time. And it's expected this time. It's not like you drop last minute, hey, we need to get this figured out to get this on the agenda. We know it's coming. We know it's going to be on the agenda. We can make sure the printing's set. And we can make sure that these numbers are ready to go. I think there's a lot more time this time around and less work that needs to be done.
Yeah, thank you, Council Bragden, and I too am are in favor of option two. And if we need to look at the timeline line a little bit to tweak it, we can. We just know we can't get it done by this June election time. So um, option two it is. We're going to move forward with that. Thank you. So we are now out of workshop. And we're going to continue with our agenda. There is no unfinished business to bring forward. And so in new business, Counselor Pelletier, can I have you read order number thirty dash twenty twenty five?
Certainly. Order number thirty dash twenty twenty five, providing for execution of the town warrant for March thirteen, twenty twenty five. It is ordered that the town warrant for March thirteen, twenty twenty five in the amount of three hundred ninety eight thousand, four hundred forty seven dollars and ninety four cents is hereby approved.
Second. A motion made by Counselor Pelletier, seconded by Counselor McGowan. You have some heavy hitters to share with us? Okay.
Uh, thirty thousand, seventy eight dollars, forty cents for Autotronics. You know, work on the ambulance. Eleven thousand, four hundred and sixty six dollars, fifteen cents is for fuel from Dead River Diesel and propane for various departments. Three thousand, one ninety nine and thirty four cents is the credit card billing. Three thousand dollars, Katana area TV, that's the contract, I guess, or payment. Uh, three thousand, two hundred and sixty one dollars and eighty five cents, main technology group, the maintenance contract. Forty two thousand, thirty two dollars, thirty nine cents. Main Waters for high heights rental. Uh, thirty seven thousand, five hundred dollars, Memorial Library that is under contract. Uh, Municipal Waste Solutions for six thousand, eight hundred nineteen dollars, twenty two cents, a transfer site waste disposal. Five thousand, three hundred and seven dollars, ninety six cents, New England Salt Company, so two thousand dollars for PDQ Door Company, Public Works, uh, door maintenance on the building. Preval Oil Company, four thousand, four hundred and sixty four dollars, forty seven cents. Obviously, oil. Uh, town of East Millen Market, one thirty two thousand, one hundred and twenty dollars, the police and recreational contract payment. That's that.
Any council comment on this order? Counsel McGowan?
Yeah, I just wanted to to point out the thirty thousand thirty thousand, seventy eight, forty to Autotronics for the return to the ambulance was reimbursed by our insurance company, other than a five hundred dollar deductible.
Okay, thank you. Any other council comment on this order? Any public comment? See and none back to the council for a vote. All those in favor of order number thirty. Look at this. Even no roll call, we get used to having somebody on video and have to go roll call. Motion passes seven zero. Very good. Counselor McGowan, can I have you read order number thirty one?
Certainly. Order number thirty one dash twenty twenty five, providing for execution of the wastewater warrant for March thirteenth, twenty twenty five. It is ordered that the wastewater warrant for March thirteenth, twenty twenty five in the amount of eighty four thousand, nine hundred and twenty seven dollars and sixteen cents is hereby approved.
Thank you.
Motion made by Counsel McGowan, seconded by Counselor Dume. Do you have anything to share with us?
Uh, just a couple. Three thousand, three hundred and eleven dollars and ninety cents to Katana Motors. Uh, that was maintenance on the wastewater truck. And seventy seven thousand, seven eighty six, twenty two to Maine Municipal Bond Bank. That is our bond with them.
Any council comment on this order? Any public comment on this order? See and none back to the council for a vote. All those in favor of order number thirty one. Motion passes seven zero. Counselor Macken, can I have you read order number thirty two?
Order number thirty two dash twenty twenty five, providing for approval of reappointment to the Recreation Advisory Committee, Ace Sortal. It is ordered that Amanda Sortal is hereby reappointed to the Town of Illinois of Recreations Advisory Committee for three year term to expire March thirty first, twenty twenty eight. Note, Amanda's application was received on three nine, twenty twenty five, and it's the only application on file, leaving the board with two vacancies and one full seat and one alternate.
Thank you.
Motion made by Counselor Mack and seconded by Counselor Higgins. Council comment on this order? Council Bragden.
I just want to thank Amanda for doing this again. It takes a lot of volunteer, especially in some of these groups. Uh, so your volunteerism is not going. So I appreciate it. Thank you.
Any other comment? Any public comment? Back to the council for a vote. All those in favor of order number thirty two. Passes seven zero. Uh, Counselor Dume, can I have you read order number thirty three?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Order number thirty three dash twenty twenty five, providing for approval of payment to the Katana area television, whereas the administration and Cat TV have identified and verified that a regular payment to Cat TV was has been missed in fiscal year twenty twenty three. It is ordered that the Millen Market County Council approves correcting this missed payment by approving a payment to be made to Cat TV in the amount of six thousand dollars, and that means funds are allocated from the unassigned fund balance. Thank you.
Motion made by Counselor Dume, uh, seconded by Counselor Higgins. Council comment on this order?
It's weird saying cat TV and it's not. It's cat V.
Okay. Yeah. It's misspelled. Very good. Thank you.
Oh, it's Katana area television. Press me, punk. I say it too.
There we go. Any official comment on this order from the council? None to from the public? See and none back to the council for a vote. All those in favor of order number thirty three. Passes seven zero. Counselor Bragden, can I have you read order number thirty four?
Absolutely. Order number thirty four dash twenty twenty five, providing for acceptance of fire department cancer reduction grant. It is ordered that It is ordered that the Millinocket Town Council accepts this grant totaling five thousand dollars from, from the Maine Fire Protection Services Commission Cancer Reduction Grant Program. It is further ordered that the local match requirement of three thousand, three hundred and twenty-five dollars and zero cents be allocated from the expense line zero-two-zero-three dash two-zero-three-four Supplies and Tools. Note, these funds will be used to purchase a gear extractor from HSC Fire and Safety Department with the purpose of washing firefighter gear.
Motion made by Councilor Bragdon, seconded by Councilor McGowan. Council comment on this order? Uh, Councilor Dumay?
Thank you. I'd just like to take a short um, appreciation for Fire Chief Moore going after all these grants that keep you and your, your staff safe. Thank you very much.
Any other council comment? Any public comment on this order? See a nun, back to the council for a vote. All those in favor of order number for thirty-four? Motion passes, seven zero. Uh, Councilor McGowan, can I have you read order number thirty-five?
Certainly. Order number thirty-five dash twenty twenty-five, providing for approval of mutual aid fire agreement with Town of East Millinocket Fire Department. It is ordered that the Millinocket Town Council grants approval to enter into the attached mutual aid fire agreement with the Town of East Millinocket Fire Department. It is further ordered that the town manager and fire chief are authorized to sign the agreement once approved.
Motion made by Council McGowan, seconded by Councilor Bragdon. Council comment on this order? Uh, Council Dumay?
Thank you very much, Chairperson. Once again, this is one of those um, agreements that have not really been put in writing in the past. So this is one of the last and final things that I'm happy to see take place. Just for clarification, Gordon, I've, I've explained it a few times to to some citizens that don't quite understand how the compensation works on on a um, mutual aid agreement. Could you briefly just share that with the community so they understand who?
Can you come to the, come to the podium, please? So everybody can hear you.
Trust them looking this way.
It's a wireless, you can walk around and.
Oh, there you go. Alright.
So if we were called down to East Millinocket for, for a report of a building fire, we would respond with what they request for equipment. And in return, if we had a fire up here in Millinocket, uh, whatever we request for them, they would respond on up here. So that's how mutually works. It's a mutual aid contract, so it's uh, we're able to provide exactly the same equipment. So uh, we have an agreement with them for any first alarm assignment for a reported building fire in either town where each will be responding.
In the compensation portion, does Millinocket pay its employees or does East Millinocket, how does that work?
So yeah, the compensation, uh, we pay our employees for responding to a fire in East Millinocket, in East Millinocket, when they come up here, they pay their employees, so.
Any other council comment on this order? Um, oh, to the public, any public comment on this order? Alright, see a nun. We'll take it to a vote. All those in favor of order number thirty-five? Passes seven zero. There we go. Councilor Pelletier, can I have you read order number thirty-six, please?
My pleasure. Order number thirty-six, twenty twenty-five, providing for rescind order number twenty-six, twenty twenty-five previously failed by February twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five. It is ordered that the Millinocket Town Council rescinds order number twenty-six, twenty twenty-five. Approval of an application of malt vinous, spirituous liquor license for the Blue Ox Saloon. It is further ordered that the attached application of malt, of a malt vinous and spirituous liquor license is hereby approved for Thomas St. John, business address sixty-one Prom Scott Avenue, doing business as the Blue Ox Saloon, sixty-one Prom Scott Avenue, Millinocket.
A motion made by Council Pelletier, seconded by Council Dumay. Uh, before I go to council comment, I have comment um, prepared. So um, I'm bringing this back up for another vote because I learned new information and I better understand the process between the municipality and the state for this license. This is also the first time in my tenure, serving on the council, that we've received information from the police listing incidences involving law enforcement involvement for any of the liquor applications that we get. So it gave me great pause in deciding how to vote. What I said at the last meeting still holds true. The multiple incidences shared by the police department are very, very concerning. And I still feel they need to be addressed swiftly and appropriately. I am willing to work with the business owner and give him a chance to implement his corrective action plan that is attached to this order. However, if any of the open cases under investigation result in conviction, we will need to uh, do our due diligence and revisit this. We have steps we can take at that point, even if we approve this tonight. So is it, as a municipality, there are some steps we can take to strengthen our stance on responsible beverage service, such as mandating responsible beverage server training um, for all liquor licenses that we approve. So other municipalities such as Bangor have an ordinance, and I've looked at it, and I'd like to, us to consider it in the future. But at this time, I don't have anything further to say, and we'll open it up for other counselors to comment before we go to the public. Other council comment? Councilor Bragdon?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, first, I want to thank Mr. St. John for the email that we got that had the letter very professionally written, and that is exactly what I was looking for in the first meeting personally. Uh, it outlined everything that I wanted to hear. Uh, so I will be moving in favor, or voting in favor of this tonight after seeing that letter and then hearing comments from other counselors that have spoken with Mr. St. John. And uh, very impressed with the timely response that you, you sent to us, so thank you.
Councilor Dumay?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I um, I too will be changing my vote to a yes vote. I went and visited uh, Mr. St. John at his uh, at the Blue Ox Saloon yesterday. And um, trust and verify, he did have cameras going up, a new computer system going in, and uh, had a nice conversation with him. I also thanked him for the letter that he sent. I thought it was very appropriate. I thought it took responsibility and accountability and is certainly all the steps that I was looking for as well in the first meeting two years ago. Um, two, two weeks ago, so. So um, so I, I do want to thank him for coming here tonight and to uh, and for addressing those things that we, that we certainly asked for. One of the regrettable things, and the chairperson spoke about it, is the misunderstanding that in the lack of education with municipal law, state law, and how all these permits and licenses work. To somebody that's not in the legal field, those things can get very confusing, and to be honest with you, I don't, I don't even know why we vote on those things because it's very ceremonial. The state has all the power and all the authority. We're just all bark and no bite up here when it comes to those things. So it's, it's, it's rather concerning um, that we have to vote on those things, and I, and I hope that we don't have to do that again. Knowing what we know now, um, I think the outcome would have been different. So Tom, um, appreciate all that you're, that you're going to be doing. Your, your business is certainly a staple in our community, and I hope that you didn't walk away, and in coming from our conversation yesterday, I hope that you sincerely didn't walk away thinking that the council, in my impression, certainly from my seat, had no intention of trying to shut another business down or close anybody out. I think we're just looking for responsibility, clean this up. Like the chairperson said, we've never come in, in a situation where the department came with that information before. Always, it's just been a questionnaire on the back of a form, check yes to no, and it's, so it's it was out of our uh, realm that we normally deal with. I wish we had just tabled it at that point, so, and just move it to this meeting until we got a better understanding. I'm glad that the administration got an understanding uh, with the liquor enforcer and with the state authorities and our responsibilities as a municipality. Um, once those things are all understood, we see things in a different light. So I'm going to end with that. Thank you.
Councilor Pelletier?
Well, as I was first, uh, review of this order, I'm still in favor of it, didn't feel that we should turn it down unless the state acted first. In favor of it. Thank you.
Council Higgins?
Yes, I'd like to thank Mr. St. John for getting that letter to the council. I think a lot of this is what we weren't telling you how to run your business, or which isn't what we're supposed to do, and it's not the right thing. But it was us actually trying to figure out how we were, or how you were going to prevent some of that from possibly happening again. And so I want to say thank you very much for taking the steps that you've taken up to this point.
Any other council comment before I go to the public? So I will go to the public for comment now. I know, Mr. Pringle, on Zoom, you had sent us a letter. Um, now that you're here, would you like to share?
Yes, um, can you hear me?
We can hear you. State your name and your address, please.
Sure. Chuck Pringle, One Colony Place. Uh, based on the letter and the information that the town council um, has provided, uh, even though it appears that the town council has already decided on a decision, uh, my concerns are in addition to the fact that the letter just came out that the business owner most likely should have known uh, ten or plus years more that um, the cameras installed both on the inside and the outside of the business would have helped facilitate preventing, uh, not completely preventing, but would have assisted in preventing in serving uh, alcohol to, to minors. With, with a town this small, uh, the likelihood that the people serving the alcohol to these minors probably are known, that the underage drinkers are known, maybe not to every employee there, but it, it may be somewhat obvious that either, excuse me, identification was not being properly presented, or if it was that methods weren't being taken to verify the authenticity. And separate from the fact that the letter was addressed to the town manager, I would have expected that a business owner would have gone to the East Millinocket Police Department and/or the state of Maine in order to find out the methods that they recommended as far as placement of video cameras in and around the business and the methods used to, to check uh, identification. I also have seen some public comment outside of this forum from parents who have, have specified that their children, their underage children were served alcohol at that establishment. And I think that waiting until now um, to finally say that, that action is going to be taken by the business owner seems a little far sighted in the interest of protecting both the community and children who may be consuming alcohol. I know it's not one hundred percent possible to, for underage drinkers. But I believe that the business should have taken action more than just recently based on the police reports that we've, that have now been made public. And I would hope that if, if an incident does occur again um, per the amended order, or if somebody is found liable or guilty in whatever method is deemed appropriate with somebody serving underage alcohol or alcohol to underage individuals that that the council will reconsider whether or not the permit should continue to, to exist. And uh, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Any other public comment? Up to the podium and state your name and address, please. Any, any other problem? Hold on. Any other public comment at this time? Up to the podium, state your name and address, please. Millinocket resident?
Yes, Shane Flynn with the Van Patten, sorry, just moved there. I uh, I would just like to compliment the um, council for their consideration of and obviously, uh, clear consideration. I'd just like to comment a little bit about uh, the South Florida and what it means to to something that's very important. Uh, I work with Arcatton, a lot of people there know that, and uh, you know, we focus, and I started to focus a lot of uh, my work on what happens inside the former and uh, and that's really important, and it's uh, as you know, we're pretty closely with the council. Uh, but, you know, a community needs to have business that goes across the spectrum. And it's not enough to have one very large business that comes in. Certainly, this community better than almost any community in the country. Those one can add one large business. Uh, so it's important that there be a spectrum of, of businesses.
Oh, okay. Uh, so it is, it is an essential part of any community that there be a opportunity for businesses to flourish uh, across that spectrum that I mentioned. One of the things that I have found over the six years that I've been working with Arcatton is that we go to, to businesses in this area. Uh, and we bring as much business there as we possibly can, as we should, and we're delighted to do. It's great. Uh, and the Blue Ox is actually one of the more important places that we bring people, believe it or not. And I'm not going to talk about whether, uh, you know, this practice or that practice is good, bad, or indifferent. What I would say is that a man is trying to make his living. He works there uh, seven days a week. And, and he's there to serve people that come into this community, but there is nothing else open. And we're not even talking about, well, there mightn't be this bar, there might be that bar. There's nothing else open. And it allows us to bring someone in, to allow them to meet people from this community and to get a better sense for the community. Not everyone in the community, but part of the community. And we've had so many businesses that have walked away and said that experience was one of the best experiences they had. Uh, so people can have comments of whether they like something or don't like it, but a lot of people that we work with are very struck by a business like this one. You know, I often say, and I've said it to some of the counselors, you go into a bar in one of the big cities, you see all the, the stuff hanging here and hanging there. And, you know, some designer probably went out, bought all that stuff and put it there. In the case of Tom's business, you know, he built that organically over so many years, and it's very genuine and very true. And connects actually to this community. So much of what's in there connects to this large community. So I, I'm glad that you've deliberated, glad what I've heard here tonight. And I'm glad to be here to support Tom and this business and other businesses.
Thank you, Mr. Quinn. Good night. I will ask that you don't clap going forward if you want to speak afterwards to whoever shared your same sentiment, that would be appropriate, but in in this meeting, thank you. So we will go to more public comment on Zoom. Stephanie, you want to come off mute and tell us your name and your address, please?
Hi, Stephanie Sinclair, Ninety-Six Arustic, Millinocket. I just want to address Mr. Pringle's comments about underage drinking.
Would you please keep it to the order? We don't need to call out other people. We want your opinions. Don't direct it to anyone in particular, please.
Okay, so I think some of the onus has to be on the individuals that are going in there and presenting false identifications. These identifications are so good. It's very difficult times to determine whether they're authentic or fake. And I think Tom, having been in there myself many times, Tom is very responsible. I honestly have never seen anybody that could be questionable in there myself. It's usually an older crowd. And I think Tom does a very good job and, you know, as a sole proprietor and one individual can do, you know, and unfortunately, you know, these children obviously had snuck in there when he was not looking and some of the onus has to go on them because they are committing, they're breaking the law by entering that establishment underage.
Thank you for your comment. Any other public comment? Come to the come to the podium, Mr. St. John. Thank you. Please identify yourself and your your address.
Who's this guy?
Yeah. Is it Mike Worthen?
I want to say I appreciate this concern over here and Shane. That one woman that talked about underage drinking. I do not tolerate underage drinking. I never have. But every once in a while, they slip through the cracks. And they'll be outside. When you find something like that, you stop immediately. But I have never and never would jeopardize my license or anything else to just, you know, make that happen. I just won't. So I got a little thing here to read. Hope it doesn't take too long. This is good evening, members of the council and community. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm here to ask for your support as I work to address concerns surrounding stricter identification, verification, and additional security measures at the Blue Ox Saloon. I understand the importance of maintaining a safe and welcoming environment for both residents and visitors, and I am committed to making the necessary improvements to meet the needs of the times. I have been a part of the community for over fifty years. And more than thirty of those years I have owned and operated the Blue Ox Saloon, serving this town through both its strongest and most challenging times. I have seen Millinocket through the booming years of the mill when businesses flourished, families thrived, and opportunity was everywhere. I have also stood by this town through its hardest days, when the mills shut down, businesses disappeared, and many families had no choice but to leave. Even then I stayed. I have worked every single day to keep my establishment open because I believe in Millinocket and in its resilience and its future. I have always believed in the revitalization of this town, and I continue to invest in its success. Beyond the Blue Ox, I have taken great pride in contributing to Millinocket's growth and community spirit, whether it's raising funds for cancer research, sponsoring local softball, bowling, and volleyball leagues, or starting a pool league to do to bring people together. My goal has always been to support and strengthen this town. I've also invested in Millinocket's future by opening a pizza shop, purchasing a building, the old Newberry Building, in hopes of establishing a museum because I always thought it should be downtown, not on the way through town. We need to bring things downtown. And of course, I'm, as you know, and I've always been behind planting trees and making, like North Conway, having everyone having a hand carved sign, which is true because attraction makes people want to come and invest. Just leaving it the way it is is just not not getting it. Purchasing a purchasing building in the Revitalized Main Street. In addition, I own a building in East Millinocket and for the last few years have been renovating it to create a small restaurant that will serve the community, which would be basically a place to have breakfast. You can't get it there. Opening from six to one would be a nice job. Now, that would be beautiful instead of staying open till two AM in the morning. Now I'm proud to say that my son, Andrew, back here, has moved back to the town. He was born in Millinocket to continue the legacy I started. After leaving Millinocket as a young as at a young age to pursue his dreams in Los Angeles, he became a success and he built a successful career, becoming an actor, running his own business for over a decade and earning its is our end. As a matter of fact, maybe I can get him up and talk to you a little bit. He ran the clinic at the largest G O there is in the United States, which is Orange County. So I mean, he knows how to handle problems. And stepping in a family business is incredibly meaningful to me. I have dedicated over half my life to building businesses that serve this community and knowing that my son is willing and eager to carry that forward with me. It's immense pride. He's capable, smart, and driven. And I know he will be a great addition to both our businesses and the town as a whole. His skills, experience, and passion for helping others will not only strengthen what I have built, but also bring new energy and ideas to help Millinocket continue to grow and prosper. I appreciate this town's patience and collaboration, and I implement these necessary changes. My commitment remains the same to be a positive force in Millinocket and to assure that my business continues to serve and uplift the people who 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 call town home. The moment, the Blue Ox has been a part of the community for decades, providing a welcoming space for both locals and visitors. It's response in in response to recent concerns, I have taken protective protective actions, steps. My eyes are a little bad. You'll have to excuse me. Steps to enhance safety, including installing cameras inside the bar to ensure a secure environment for patrons and staff. These measures reflect my commitment to running a responsible business that provides the well-being of the community. With these improvements in place, I respectfully ask for your consideration in approving the liquor license for the Blue Ox so that we can continue serving the town in a responsible and positive way. Thank you for your time and support. I look forward to working together to keep Millinocket safe and strong. And if my son would like to probably say something, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. St. John.
If you have some questions. You got my hat.
I was wondering where that was.
I was doing my office.
Oh, very good. Very good. I, yeah, okay. Thank you for your public comment. Before we go any further, we do have somebody on Zoom and their name is not up there. iPhone Two, you need to put your name up there or you will no longer be welcome at our meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you. Whoever is on Zoom named iPhone Two, we need your full name. Manager can help you with that if you don't know how to.
While we're waiting.
Please. So, Mr. Manager, at your discretion, you can take care of iPhone Two. Is there any other public comment before I come back to the council? Come right up.
It's evening. Good evening. My name is Andrew St. John. Tom St. John's my father. I appreciate your time. As my father said, he's been in this community for over fifty years. And because of that, I'm grateful I was born here in the little hospital that I moved home and I took a job in. But I mostly moved home to help my father, who's obviously getting older, as we all do. And his time here in the last thirty years in the businesses that he's built, I know he's had a pizza shop when I was a kid. I remember my mother used to lift burgers on a hamburger stand that he had that used to sit out in front of Millinocket Variety. So this town has a deep meaning to me, and being a part of community is very important to me. So I have come. So with that said, you know, petitioning here for the town, we appreciate your support. One of the things that I appreciate most about community, and I think that, I mean, my father is of the generation, and your parents are as well, was that when things are broke, they didn't throw them away. They fixed them. It was a it was a community of resilient people that built things to last, and that's something that my father has strived to do in this town. It is something that I would like to keep on for him. But if anyone that's been in this town has seen, he has a slogan on his bar that says, "The ox is slow, but the land is patient." Change takes time. And my father, the patient man, he is diligent and he's meticulous about what he does. But in order to address a problem, you have to have awareness of a problem. And so with awareness comes change. And the funny thing about change is it's the only constant in this universe, but it's the thing we resist as human beings the most, and the world is changing every day. So we all know it's a struggle to keep up with it at times. So with the awareness that we have now and implementing the changes that we do and having a continuing building relationship with the community, it's the direction that we are going, just like the world. Change is coming, and we are ready and eager to be a part of it. We thank you for your consideration. And I look forward to working with you all in the future. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. I am going to bring it back to the council. Oh, I will take another public comment.
Thank you, Cody McQ and eighty-one Bowden Street. I just have a point of order to bring to the chair, Madam Chair. I just want to caution the council and in your position. Clapping is a peaceful form of decorum and recognition of when someone is speaking in front of a board. We clap for those who have presentations on their behalf. This council, this room, the public has clapped in recognition of former speakers on several issues in pro and in favor. And I just want to acknowledge that earlier this evening that the public, they clapped. There was no hoopla. There was no yelling or screaming. There was a peaceful recognition in support of a comment. So I would just caution the council.
Thank you, Mr. McQ.
Pushing against that form of peaceful recognition. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah. I'm gonna I'm gonna bring it. I'm gonna bring it back to the council now. I know Council Dumea, I knew Council Dumea has it.
Oh, so many things I want to say. So I'll leave that one.
Yeah.
Might as well be.
Right, that's okay.
I'm losing my train of thought.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Sorry. So now we know who wrote the letters. Thank you, Andrew. And all the literally went out when you said that you were an actor. In all seriousness, though, I wanted to address some of the comments that were made tonight. I want to make it absolutely clear that everything that was mentioned was pretty much curtailed in the last statements that you were made and in the letter that that Mrs. St. John sent to us. All that we, because we don't operate from thirty years ago with paddy wagons and miners just being dropped off to their home, it's the same reason why we don't have the local sheriffs pick up somebody that's O U I and just bring them home. It's because things have gone over the years to a point where it's not being able to be controlled and things get more dangerous. So with times changing, like you just said, and these issues need to be addressed, it's it's refreshing and welcome to know that you and your father are stepping into that awareness and addressing these issues. So just want to make it very clear that I think that most of us up here are very supportive of the Blue Ox being the establishment that it is, being a staple in our community, being an icon. I mean, when people come for the races and when people come for reunions, every every reunion, there's a meeting at the Scudic and there's a meeting at the Blue Ox. It's it's hand in hand. So or the Elks or the American Legion, these are all staples in the community. The only thing from my perspective in my seat is responsibility, awareness, and things of that nature, which I think are all being addressed. So I think that's a great thing. Tommy shared with me, and I'm surprised you didn't say it. He shared with me that after the last town council meeting, that next weekend was his busiest weekend since New Year's. So you're welcome, Tom. And I'm sure that you feel welcome that you have you have so much support. So so to bring it all back, I just want to make sure that everybody is is clear and that we're just looking out for the best of this community too. And your establishment, your patrons, your staff, all your visitors are safe as they can be. No, you can't catch everything. There's things that slip through the cracks, of course, and there's onus on the person that's causing the problem, but to mitigate those things, I think it would be in in your best interest. So, yeah, thank you once again, and thank you for addressing all those things. That's all I got to say.
Counselor Bragdon, you had your head up?
Yes, similar comments. I want to speak to some of the other individuals that spoke tonight. As Mr. St. John is aware, the state laws are extremely strict. Without somebody who has had a local license and sells beer and wine at a local business in town, the state makes it very clear it is our responsibility, but I do agree that kids that do come in with fake identities, it's a federal offense. They should be held accountable if they're doing that. But however, to Mr. St. John's defense, I think everybody deserves a second chance regardless of their past. That's how I was brought up, that's how my parents and grandparents taught me, and it stands still to today. So again, I appreciate all the comments you and your son made tonight. I appreciate the efforts you're making. Hopefully, I'll stop down on a night that's not as busy as New Year's night, but thank you for all your efforts.
Counselor Mackin.
To be honest with you, when I came in here tonight, I was on the fence. I wasn't, I so wasn't sure. After listening to what you had to say and what everybody else had to say, I just, I'm confident that you're stepping up, taking responsibility. And I commend you for that. Thank you very much. And the only thing I can say is, be there tomorrow.
Any other counselor comment before we go to vote? Any other? I think there's been enough said. So we are going to take a vote on order number thirty-six. All those in favor of order number thirty-six?
Do we include onion rings?
Oh. Seven oh, motion passes, seven zero. Order number thirty. Wait a minute, or order number thirty-seven? Counselor Higgins.
The future reference.
Yeah.
Yes, Manager.
Order number thirty-seven.
Order number thirty-seven, twenty twenty-five, providing for authorization to amend order number twenty-seven twenty twenty-five, previously adopted on February twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five. It is ordered that the it is ordered that order number twenty-seven, twenty twenty-five, now read.
Order. Can't hear what all that emotion going on, sorry.
Would you let me start back over?
We'll start from the beginning.
I was going to just meant. I was just going to mention that this is authorizing to amend an order that's been rescinded.
No, this is order number twenty-seven.
Number thirty-seven.
The last order rescinded it. And thirty-six was passed.
This is for the entertainment.
This is the entertainment license that followed.
Thirty-seven. Sorry for the confusion. Thirty-seven. Sorry for the confusion. Perhaps we need to start again. Let's, let's deep rock start again.
Order number thirty-seven, twenty twenty-five, provide for authorization to amend order number twenty-seven twenty twenty-five, previously adopted on February twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five. It is ordered that order number twenty-seven, twenty twenty-five now reads. It is ordered that the attached application for an entertainment license is hereby approved with the following condition. The Blue Ox Saloon is given notice that if it is involved in another incident or another violation by law enforcement, the town will seek and or revoke said entertainment license following the procedure written in the town charter, chapter sixty-five, entertainment license subsection sixty-five dash eight, suspension or revocation of permit.
Motion made by Counsel Higgins, seconded by Counselor Bragdon.
May I speak to that order?
Yes, please speak to this order, Counselor Higgins.
Yes, Madam Chair. The reason I'm, I'm asking for that to be amended is to hold listening to people from the community and both for and against what was going on. It's so we, it actually holds the town accountable and it holds the business accountable. I know it's written in there and the whole subsections there and how it's done. And I didn't get a chance when this was approved to fully explain why I wanted to amend it. It is like you said, just giving teeth to both sides. That way everybody's heard, heard and they understand what's going on. Uh, we've seen it here. I mean, it was a total change around just on the order number thirty-six, twenty twenty-five, from one side to the other side as far as wanting to in support, not support, it actually turns people like it always has, the way it's supposed to work up here. Uh, but I just wanted to just amend it, the whole people accountable. But the last thing we need to do is lose another business in this town. We've had them pushed out, we've lost them, and we don't need to lose anymore.
Counselor Pelletier.
It, can you use your microphone?
There we go.
Yeah, uh, with, with these of these incidents that can be perpetrated, this doesn't leave any leeway. First, first thing that occurs without any judgment as to how or why it happened and what may have been done, we're trying to prevent it, you know? It's just no wiggle, don't like it.
Uh, Counselor Dume.
Yes, uh, thank you. Counsel Pelletier, Counsel Higgins, would this be more accurate if it read Blue Ox Saloon is given a notice that it is convicted of a incident or other violation by law enforcement, conviction? Not just the assumption?
Always been my, it's always been my point that the state should act first before we do.
May I speak to you, Madam Chair?
Yeah.
The whole thing on this is, by the way, the subset, subsector is written, and I can bring you a copy of it, my apologies. But I mean, it goes, once it happens, it goes to public hearing. It's not, you don't automatically at that point, the business goes away or you take, you pull the entertainment license. It goes into front of a public hearing, both for, against, and then we decide. So I mean, it's not saying it's automatically gets done. It just starts the process and it holds us as a town, as a council accountable to it. I can read it if you want, but I would prefer if you did. You would prefer that they did? Yes. So, chapter sixty-five, entertainment license subsection sixty-five dash eight, suspension or revocation of permit. Municipal officers may suspend or revoke a special amusement permit as ordered under the chapter. If the permit holder is in violation of any provisions of this chapter or has knowingly made an incorrect statement of a material nature on the application of a permit, determination of the subr- severity of the violation and or whether a suspension or revocation is warranted, shall be made by municipal offices after a public hearing proceeding preceded by notice to interested parties.
Counselor Bragdon, did you still want to speak?
Jesse asked, or Counsel Dume asked the same question that I was gonna ask. I was curious if the intention was conviction, but now that I know.
Other counselor comment?
I, as Chair, I, I will just make a comment that, um, I guess I don't think this is necessary, um, this order. We have it, it's written in our, um, our, in our code, uh, we can take action. I don't, I think it's redundant to have an order stating that, um, we already have that, um, ability, power, I guess, might you say? But I don't feel that it's necessary to, um, change the order we passed the entertainment license last, um, our previous meeting. And it would be my vote to, um, to vote this down. Any other counselor? Go back to Counselor Bragdon.
Do you have a comment? I sent via email and communications, the manager and the communications view, and obviously your statements that you made when you read, uh, your portion, the last order uh, about stricter rules, stricter laws and modifying the code book. Um, even if this does passes and we do fully intend to change the code book, then it's basically no one's fault because we've changed the policy. Um, just want to point that out. If we have full intentions on actually changing the code book, then we should wait to do this until after you said time it's gonna change. And it is redundant. I, I really do think it is. I do like the intent that it's there, that the public is aware that it's there. Um, but if we're gonna change it, then it's gonna.
Back to Counselor Dume.
So I have a different thought and I'm wondering if Counselor Higgins will follow me on it. I think if I'm interpreting this correctly, he's looking more for a triggering effect rather than another council being able to, because if this issue comes up in a, in another council, then another council will have to take action by the order, which would be another vote. I think what he is looking for is if this happens, then this automatically happens. Am I anywhere in the ballpark?
Yes, to a point. Um, but it's meant by this, it also holds the town accountable. Yes, it's there in the charter. It could have been done, but no one's acted upon it. We've been, we've had this before and it's happened before. Well, this just, it's gonna hold us accountable too, as it, and it's powered. Because there were people that were very concerned about the underage serving. And I would hope that it's, see something happen where my son, who was coming up through, he's underage. I would like to think that if someone in here or there saw my son and they would say, hey, excuse me, Bob, your son Hunter is with you. And he, he knows that he's not a village. We're a village.
Counsel, Counselor Mackin, would you like to speak? Counselor Mackin?
I just said, a lot of parents that like him, they really don't care.
Ten bucks says he's sitting in the parking lot across the street with. They're there every night.
But I know where he's at.
Oh, yeah, no, and the camera over here speaks the parking. You're saying.
Any other counselor comment before I go to Counselor McGowan?
Say that I, I, after listening to what everyone's saying, I mean, I would tend to agree with Chair Danforth that it, I, I understand the intent, but I think it's just redundant because we can do it anyway.
It is, it is.
Yeah, Madam Clerk, please. Let's take it to pu- let's take it to public comment. Anybody have public comment on this order? Yeah, seeing none, um, back to the council. We'll take a vote on order number thirty-seven. All those in favor?
Yeah.
All those opposed? I didn't see, did we in favor?
I was in favor.
So it's four, three. Motion to passes.
You said that follows, I'm sorry, Madam Chair, you said that follows the entertainment license, so next year it would be another. No, no? Thank you. That's what I, that's what I was asking. If it follows this entertainment, it's not the next one. Yes, sir.
Okay, now we're on to reports and communications. Warrant committee for their next meeting, uh, will be Counselor Bragdon and myself. Good without? Chair Committee reports. We have none. We just talked about charter review stuff. Yeah. Now we are on to two minute, minute public comment. Anybody would like to address the chair?
All of it, three thirty on the street. I just wanted to brag a little bit, because I think it's been the first time since I've been here that all the council members are here.
Present.
I don't know, but as many times I've been here, I haven't seen all of yous. But it is nice because you're all together instead of somebody speaking on, on Zoom or something. It's nice to see. And I don't know if this is possible, but I think when we have a big, big, uh, issue or something that we should, um, put that at last, so we don't see a hundred people walking out to the half of the, this meeting, because I think it's important, if you're coming for one thing, you shouldn't say in respect, counsel, what they're up doing and that. That's it. I don't know if it's possible, but if that's obvious people wait, they'll be doing it one.
Thank you. We have public comment on Zoom. Melanie, would you like?
Hi, Melanie Higgins, one ten minute man drive, just letting council know that Hunter Higgins is up to the lake.
Oh, that's, I saw you put that in the chat, but I didn't know what you meant.
Thank you.
He's not across the street.
No. Thank you.
That was it?
Yeah, that's it. Thank you. Bye.
Seeing no other public comment, um, we'll just mention that we are here next Thursday for our first budget workshop. So one week away, we will hopefully all be up here again.
At five thirty.
Yeah, yeah. All right. So, uh, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Sure.
Second.
A motion made by Counsel Dume, seconded by Counsel McGowan, all those in favor of adjournment. Motion passes seven zero. Five two, was it five two?
Yes.
Oh, my gosh. Done.
Somebody have to send so I can revote.
Yeah, right? So, Madam? Counselors. Oh, hell, slur.